Call me in order for the Statute of Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, unuttered, infinite.
Okay, we go to begin the executive session. Motion to begin the executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, approval of the minutes.
Motion.
I need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion to reconvene.
Second.
So we are reconvening?
Yes.
Number three, approval of the minutes. Point one, point two, three.
It sounds like a no other connection.
Hot spot. She needs to fill in her hotspot. It's called J. Money.
I was working right along. Just tell who it times out for that.
I don't know.
Trial this. A lifetime. That's why I'm saying.
Good. All right. Thanks. Who wants to motion for minutes?
Mike and John.
Jean. Linda. Jessica. Mike. Joe. Nora. John. Thank you. Yes.
Item four point one, personal consent agendas recommended board of education approve the personnel items. Motion.
Some more. Second.
Any discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike. Joe. Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
If I may, as we're just doing personnel, it might be a good time to introduce Graham.
Yeah, we had it under superintendent highlights, but yeah.
I'd like to welcome Graham Strowman, who is our student board of education representative. So he's a busy guy, but we're certainly happy that he could be here tonight. So during superintendent's highlight report, I'm going to signal him and he's going to give us enough.
Is that when he has to stand up and sing and dance?
No, that's a different. He would.
Yes, he would. You're going to join along, Jean?
Huh?
You're going to join along?
Yeah, I forgot my guitar. Anyway, sorry.
So was there any discussion for?
We did roll home. We're good.
Item five, budget transfer, five point one, the motion.
Some more.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike. Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Five point two, treasures report, recommended board approve the treasures report as presented. Motion.
Some more.
Discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
And six point one, transportation requests, appropriate schools, recommend the board approve transportation request. The motion.
Some more. Second.
Discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike. Joe. Nora.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Six point two, CSE recommendations recommended board approves the CPSV CSE at five oh fourteen and hereby approved. I need a motion.
Some more.
Sorry.
Some more down together. Any discussion?
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike. Joe.
Hi.
Nora.
Hi.
John.
President's report, I just want to talk a little bit about the NISBA conference this weekend or last weekend rather. I was fortunate enough to attend with a couple of board members. And the sessions that I attended were quite eye opening. One was AI in general, which me personally makes me a little nervous. And it was kind of reinforcing the presentation. So just my opinion, but it ended with, it was a wonderful presentation on the general AI concept and helping you write emails and helping you write reports, et cetera, et cetera. Then it kind of delved into the future of AI. And I can't remember the gentleman's name who was presenting at the speaker. But he went into the future in the next three years would be being able to tell AI two different characters of a movie. Say it's a rom com, give a kind of twist. He gave the example of say there's aliens in it. And give it a few minutes and it would create generated movie for people to watch, which to me was enough to make me a little weird. It just made me nervous. And then the last thing, and I know there's some medical technologies that are assisted with in planning things into the brain. Someone that AI chip in their brain assisted them with technological communication. But it was, it was pretty full speed ahead with AI and it was very interesting, but I guess I can consider myself old now because it makes me a little nervous. So that was one. Now, the other one was I reflected back on these board meetings that we have. And there was a recommendation of a school board, president, vice president were there and they discussed how they implemented a couple of things that made their board meetings run more smoothly. One was better technology.
Paper and pencil?
I didn't say, I didn't say technical person as the term. One was just pamphlets. It gave board people, taxpayers and attendants an explanation of who we are. And they had it available. So if anyone had questions about a little bit of background, kind of like where the board goes out. I thought that was interesting. But more importantly was a booklet that was for all work on board. A booklet that kind of laid out a number of different steps that we need to take as board members, some of the expectations. One of the classic page or two was health acronym city, they call it. So we could understand all the acronyms. So it was an interesting concept and, you know, I would hope that maybe students could help. Maybe some students to assist with that to develop a pamphlet for new board members since they come on because last year is making a new board member. And who's getting the front of it signed up? But I thought that was, I thought that would be helpful for us and maybe also for people who attend board meetings. And there was another part of what we discussed in the executive session that was very helpful. So I think that it was beneficial. So I appreciate the ability to go to it. That was all I had for that.
Do you have something?
Yeah, I went to several conferences on AI because I feel like I need to learn a lot. And one of the issues that came up was that perhaps do we have an AI policy? Or should we have second one? It should be a part of other policies that we already have incorporated into that. So that's something we may have to look at in the future. And they did talk about the pros and cons of AI and it's here already. I mean, if you have a smartphone, you're using AI. But they also use the example of like it makes mistakes sometimes. Like if you type in how many Rs in strawberry, the presenter brought up the, it said two and there's three. So, you know, a lot of it is based like chat you can teach and so on. Like they use stuff from YouTube and they use stuff from, you know, all these different sources. And sometimes the information isn't totally accurate. So we have to be wary of AI because they studied all these different wonderful ways it can be used and teachers can use it and it's used in society. But we also have to understand there are things we have to be careful about. And then they also for teachers talk about ways that we can make sure kids aren't, you know, cheating when they're writing essays, things like that, that is a concern. But it was really good. And then, you know, I went to a couple of other workshops. It was very helpful. Something on like, you know, evaluations and it was got, I had a whole list of it. But the name of that presenter, he was like a national guy. He was Dan Fitzpatrick. Yeah.
He presented at the rural conferences past summer for me when I went on behalf of the district and also BOSI. And my classes, because I'm on the HR committee for the board as well as the teacher center committee and the legislative committee. My classes revolved around some of the legal aspects of AI. And of course, after I got done listening without an hour's worth of the legal ramifications of generated AI as well as AI in the district. Obviously, the policy piece is huge for us going forward because it's here to stay. But my concern, and I'm sure my fellow board members feel the same way, our reliance on AI could potentially lead to the lack of critical thinking skills, independent problem solving, and also stimulating social emotional growth. And that was the concern of almost all the board members that I networked across the state this past week. And what Nora and I talked about individually, because we did a lot of bonding. It was really a great conference. We, yes, a long bus ride, six hours down traffic and four hours back, which wasn't too bad. But that's my favorite part of going to these statewide conventions like it was back in the old days, the science conventions for teachers, is the networking primarily. I met more new people, more new experts. Look, there were several superintendents there. It wasn't just board members. It was superintendents, brand new board members. And I encouraged the rest of us to get the opportunity, I thank the district for the opportunity for the training. Because that for me has done nothing but make me, I feel better board member as well as just my, my love of education and what we can do for our kids and our staff. The other class that, the classes that I did revolved around speech, religion and protected interest, social media issues, cell phone issues. I did the law class the first day, which was very busy and packed, four hundred people in one room. And then after that, it was workshops thereafter. But my interest in law has always been there because of my HR background. Open meetings law, employee speech, what can be sensitive and what cannot, what cannot be. Blocking critics from personal social media accounts. We've had so many different issues that have popped over the last two years related to social media accounts for both not just students, the staff and in general, the community. So I think it's important that we understand there are resources out there to help us as a district. How to build trust and transparency with not just our board, but with our community. That was one of my other favorite classes. All of the information is electronically accessible to our board members. I can easily give you access to any of the slides that you have an interest in, any of the topics. You can go to the website because they have an app and they have all three days planned out and you can just pick a topic. The slides are there. I love the app because it makes it so easy for us to take notes and gather information and bring it back to the board. And the state ed department sat with us, Jeff Madison, Dr. Betty Rosa. That's the first time in my nine years being on the school board where I was able to listen to Dr. Betty Rosa from the state ed. She's our commissioner, talk to us about, she really loves kids. She really loves working with teachers. And that was evident to me in her presentation. And then finally, the thing that I passed on to Corey were two things related to safety, which he passed on to some of his SROs. You know, trying to use, how do we use AI in a positive way to help us make our kids more safe on campus? And the other one that I, that I passed on to him had to do with electrification, electric buses. We are pushing back so hard for the governor not to make us totally electric by twenty seven, our legislators are. And Joe, if it's possible, can I talk a little bit about the legislative piece? So the legislative, I met the candidates two weeks ago on, I believe it was October eighteenth or seventeenth. Where they came, they were too absent, but all the rest were there. From, from Tyler County, they were all there, Chris Friend, Senator Omera. And all of them spoke to the issues of what's going on. They, again, as I shared last fall, they are standing with us as a district. They are standing with all of the rural districts as well as the larger districts in Broom County to, to help push back some of these mandates that are really causing financial concerns. And also just infrastructure concerns. And so I want you to know they're still working very hard. If you want to write them a note and, and say thank you because they are, they are working so hard. I learned a piece of information I did not know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but there's like a hundred and fifty representatives in the state. Only fifty of them represent upstate New York. The rest all support downstate. And that was shocking to me. I didn't know the number was that low. So our representatives across upstate New York are working so hard and all willing to try and help us in schools. And I, and I'll tell you, both Chris Friend and Senator Omera were very personal. They sat at the table with us. And it was nice to visit with them and talk about their initiatives and what they're trying to help us with. So, thank you, Joe.
Yeah. And you just reminded me. Yeah. And you just reminded me, many people are starting to hear this term regionalization. And you're going to hear more and more of it. And part of the presentation from Dr. Rosa, Dr. Madison focused on regionalization and what that means. And I, I guess the best, I'm correcting your understanding, is it did kind of send some fear into people and what does that mean exactly? And what I think away from regionalization is mostly what Dr. Madison said. It's a way to collaborate with districts who have fewer resources. It's a way to share not, not personnel, but curriculum, ideas, how one program that might be successful in one district may not be in another, where they can collaborate and work together. And as you know, several districts, smaller districts in particular are merging. And I think that is an issue that regionalization is also going to look at. So just kind of an overview of what I took away from that meeting. And I think more detail is going to come out regarding this regionalization. For a committee report.
Yeah. So Nora and I met for the curriculum committee. We initially, we weren't sure how long the committee had been around or how often they've met. I think we surmised, well, still unknown. So we met with Heather Castline and Stacey Silvestri. And the agenda really, we discussed, you know, getting a better understanding of the purpose and the role of the curriculum committee. The previous year's curriculum, well, there was, there was no previous year's curriculum work. We talked about the existing process for how a curriculum is developed, who approves the curriculum, how that whole process works, what the bottlenecks are or any, you know, roadblocks in, in curriculum development and having it come to fruition and understanding some of the policy pieces of creating that curriculum. It's still a work in progress. We're trying to meet once a quarter. Yeah, I walked away with some better clarity, still some questions, but this is a work in progress. I don't know what Nora felt about it, but I'm glad that we actually got something started.
No, it was, it was a great start. And I thought it was like, Heather was working very hard to make us understand, you know, what the process and what they're working on. And, you know, the meeting needs of the different schools, the different grade levels, different subject areas. So I, I think it was a good start, yeah.
There's a lot to unpack. I mean, I came up with a list of about 20 questions and, you know.
And one hour meeting, one to two.
So it was good. It's a, it's a work. It's a start. So that was, yeah.
Do you want to add any clarification on committees? Because I thought, I think we brought this up in the rework meeting. There is only two required committee members, committee meetings, committee committees from the board. There we go. The rest are add-ons that through the historical perspective of where we go Apple Lake and they've added these on. These have been, I, I went back to one in 1990s and they've had curriculum committees, teacher center, policy board, pupil personnel, legislation, technology. They've added all of these on. And I just think it's a wonderful thing that we as a board have the opportunity to connect with our staff and get the, the information that we need and then pass it on to each other. So. But there's only two required committees that a board has to have and we're far beyond that. So I compliment the board for their efforts. I just think, thank you for taking, because it's all extra time. In addition, what do you do as a board member?
Any discussion?
Well, just regarding the policy committee, we're voting on two policies tonight, but I think we all looked at previously. And the first one regarding maybe use of schools this morning finalized rates. So that's kind of first read. And then we'll have a new batch for us to review.
Okay, so we have Mr. Westcott, some of our students from the career center. We'll let them go ahead and go first because they have the intention to get to the soccer.
It's like they're reading someone's mind.
We probably held them up a little longer than they were looking.
Oh, we just, do you have a presentation, Ross?
Yeah.
You're, you're very dependable.
Thank you.
I think while Maggie starts, Hocky Graphics did a nice little thing for each of you sitting here. They put our brand new logo, which is seen up there, and it's a little coffee cup in the spirit of Halloween. There are also some candy in there. If I can get some.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight and to listen to us. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Eddie Russell, as I would be speaking on behalf of the Career Center this evening.
Thank you.
Everyone here obviously knows Mr. Westcott, but our Career Center is not only filled with one or two people like him, where we do amazing events. And Mrs. Service is a student employment coordinator. I work with her all the time. I see her at volleyball. I see her during exams. She's just an amazing human. I work with her to set up interviews for the Career Center as well as when she, ever she has a job listing, I make posters. So I advertise that to the students. Mike Daly, he is, Mr. Daly, he is the workforce development. He's in and out doing interviews with kids. We have many, many student Career Center workers. I'm one of them. I do posters, I guess, and Sophia, she does, she does everything, your day to day. You need someone. Sophia's your girl. We have Bobby Sturbo, which unfortunately he's going to be here tonight, but he is prepping for football. So he's got that big game against MB, so.
Let him off though.
And then we have Meredith Westcott.
I had to get her here. She has to come to one of these. She was a little, little scared to death, but tough one.
Yeah, she does set up and sit down. And she's, you don't see her often because I don't get there that early, but she's always in and out and she's doing everything that I would recognize as she does a very job. We also have the Career Center teacher, which is Lexi. And then we have our PR person, which is Maddie McAvoy, and she does a great job. She's always there when we need something. So, yes.
All right. So our Career Center student workers, we do a lot and different people have different roles. But the things that all of us are trained to do is we do career exploration in a program called Zello. It's matchmaking quizzes. You can do colleges, college searching, which we use a different thing for that. That's college board. So we can do those. They kind of go hand in hand. We're all trained to help with student employment opportunities and paperwork. We take kids to the district office, check with their documentation, make sure it's all correct. I mean, there's people over here that finalize it, but we just check on the basic things. We facilitate guest speakers, presentations, and events. Some of the guest speakers we've had is the Tom Bronck real estate team. They've come and talked to our students about people who are interested in that. A YouTuber, Eli Mack, came and talked to kids who were interested in like social media, PR, things like that. And well, once the year gets going and we get more business connections, more will come. But that's what we've done so far. And then we have public relations people who work on Twitter, Instagram, and then our Career Center website.
Good question. As far as those opportunities for students, how does that communicate with your other classmates? As far as like having the guest speaker coming in?
Maggie, it takes control. She makes all the posters. We put them on like the TVs that you have, like we have in school.
We also have an interest form at the beginning of the year. All the students they fill out what they're interested in. We just had a Lot B Martin engineering come in and we went through and found all the people that are interested in engineering. And then we made passes for them to come to the event.
Oh, I guess that's me. So I, I, I'll read some of the ones that are kind of highlighted right now. This, this will date back to August. So this is the, the beginning of the year up until now. Some of the things that we've done so far is before school even started, we had a, it's a county level committee called the Talent Supply Table. And it's headed up by a gentleman by the name of Sean Lanning. So he's got two committees, one that Mike David, Mike Daly participates in with district level leadership, superintendents, assistant superintendents. And then there's another group for Career Center coordinators, work-based learning coordinators. And the idea is, is kind of similar to what we were talking about earlier in terms of sharing services, what can we do to support not just a school, but also the area. Knowing that we want our students, it'd be great to have these wonderful students come back and have a job here in our area and become part of our tech space and be around, be around. So that committee works on that. So the kickoff meeting last year, they had it Waverly this year. We had it here. And we had a keynote speaker of Chris White, who is one of the higher people in the New York State Department of Labor. So he gave this wonderful presentation on what's the world of work look like? What does it look like in the past? What does it look like today? What are the challenges? Again, kind of echoing the challenges that you're, we're just talking about with AI and things of that nature. Career Center participates in all of the orientations, including new teacher. Don't have to tell you, we got an opportunity to participate in Strategic Planning, which is fun. We, the startup every year for about two and a half weeks, we meet with all students in the high school. We cycle them in, in classes. And the goal of that is not, not only to just tell them what the Career Center can provide you, but it's also to get some information. So we use a form of the New York State Career Plan. And that has some questions that we put into a Google form. And that gives us the data that we can use. So if we have like what we had last Friday, where we had three engineers from Lot B Martin come in to do projects with students and talk about career development in that area, we have a batch of names to pull from. Instead of putting it on the announcements and hoping people show up to events, we know that we have an audience and then anyone else who wants to, to attend can attend. Beginning of the year, we, we have curriculum points in career financial management, our tech classes. We organized two experiential trips. One was the BT BOCs contact event they hold every year at the Broom County Department, straight off, it's in Biggerton, Shenango Bridge. So they do a huge event with lots of experiential, a lot of businesses come there. Sixth grade ag comes into the Career Center and it's great because I get to have these guys do some, some interacting with the sixth graders, which is always fun to watch. And then pretty soon we'll be back into senior and junior classes to talk about our upcoming event that Lexi's going to talk about in just a second. We have, over the last couple of years, cultivated a relationship with Biggerton University. It's where we're using their students to come in and, and teach and to talk with students. They did a nice transition to college event. So students could ask questions like, what is it like to be at college? What are your hurdles? And the students from Biggerton University can talk, not like an adult can talk, like a student who's experienced it and it's been a beneficial relationship. Right now, we're working on a financial responsibility session to open that up for students. So that should be, that should be good. We're developing that right now. Open house this year. I had a idea that we should bring some businesses in so parents, community members, and students can experience some of our partners. So we had three businesses in. And also we brought, brought back the food truck. It was great. Thank you, Mr. Schofield. Hosted, yeah, we have college visits constantly with the military and every, seems like every week we have a military representative outside the Career Center. And we have two instant and mid events coming up with SUNY Broom and TC3. Trips are happening all the time. Once Lexi talks about this event that's coming up in November, all of those trips will happen after that. So we had our BT BOCs in contact, which I've talked about. There was also a manufacturing technology expo at TC3, which was very, very good. And we also participated in the Broom Taoga, it'd be a BOCs consortium of the manufacturing visits. So they're trying to get all of our schools into manufacturing areas, knowing that manufacturing is a huge part of our economic system here, not only in Tywin County, but in Broom County. So we visited VNS Galvanizing. I had never heard of it. So I was like, oh, wow, I could probably get on my yellow belt mic that I ride around on campus to go to meetings on and ride right down there. It's right next to Weisman. And it was, it was really great. The students got a lot out of that. After that event, we went to SUNY Broom to look at their programs in manufacturing as well. Got speakers. Sophia touched on that. What's happened so far? We had a mason, a careers and masonry event this morning, which was awesome. Kids, kids were very engaged in that, in our building trades building, the engineering event. Eli Mack, which is all over the TVs right now in the school. And the real estate. We have a number of students that are interested in real estate, like higher than the last three years. So that was a really, it was a really great event. Let's see. We're updating the pathways document, which you're probably hearing about with us, Mike Daly, and also our leadership at the high school. Interviews are constant at the athletic program or the education over at the elementary schools or student custodials starting again. All interviews are held in the interview room at the Career Center. Ag departments always doing active stuff. We tagged along to SUNY Cobal skill. That was, that was amazing student-led event. We assist Mr. Daly with setting up internship experiences. That is interesting. I was at a BOCs level meeting last week and they threw out a number. Usually I'm not, I'm not, I usually don't hear the numbers so much. I'm usually looking for what, what's the content? What's the, what's behind the numbers? But the gentleman was saying that they have about 20 internships in all of Broom Taoga BOCs. I'd be proud of someone like Mr. Daly. There's almost 20 right now happening with our, our own district. So I thought that was really cool. Zello, yeah, we're working on using Zello not only just for the career exploration, but there's lessons that can be better utilized. So I've met with some of the people who work behind the scenes. And also we're meeting later this week to do some of our work-based learning documentation through there to make it easier for students. Because the challenge is now that we have students doing so many different things, it's being able to track everything effectively. And we've got some regional issues, which we're already mentioned.
All right. So on the board, you can see it's just the 2022.
And see how that went like this way?
2022, 2023, it's just the main career interests of students from that form that Lexi touched on earlier. Consistently it was business, health, science, engineering, and education. But this year there's been like a shift. And, oh wait, okay, it's still in the same order. So health science still takes the top. But trades, trades has been a huge jump of interest in students. And as Mr. Westcott called it earlier, we have toolbox generation. So a lot of students are going straight into the workforce and cosmetology, like a lot of things are related to. Yeah, building trades, a lot of stuff that we do over at the, what is it? Mayfield, yeah, like the Winter Circle project.
Yeah, you got it.
And, yeah, business, sports, which it's, a lot of students don't necessarily know what they want to do. But in that form, things are leaning towards, well, I don't know what I want to do, but I'm interested in sports. And I want to do this in college and I want to somehow relate this to my career. Animal science and agriculture. We have an awesome agriculture program. Animal science is huge. I know every single student in it like loves it. It's an awesome opportunity that also goes in hand in hand with the FFA program. And then engineering is at six. So like, yeah.
All right. What is going on in the Career Center? Mr. Westcott and I have been working for the past couple of weeks on the Career Shadow Event, which is happening November 13. Me and Mr. Westcott have gone down on our lunch break and we talked to tons of local businesses to get them to be part of our Career Shadow Event. Approximately 27 businesses are part of it and they're in the collaboration space in the Career Center. And it's open to 11th and 12th grade, not only in our school, but we open it to other school districts. So they can come and see all the businesses. And our goal is is that the students be able to go to these facilities, businesses and shadow them and be involved and be part of their business. And then we had, our first event was last year, last November. And they could go and they get pamphlets and they could sign up to go and tour these businesses. This year we're offering internships and to go and tour them.
Yeah, and I'm a little, because the number last- Yeah, and I'm a little, because the number last year was 20 and I thought that, you have a responsibility to go to the businesses now. So then it creates a very busy time where you're trying to coordinate business. So it'd be really nice to have you aboard and helping to coordinate that. So thank you, but yeah, our students, that was, that was a great event last year. So we'll, we'll build on, build on that. Still you.
Oh, you can find more information on our website and our business spotlight. And then we are super active on our Instagram. We just took a selfie to post on Instagram a few minutes ago.
But I wasn't, I wasn't doing the selfie right, so.
No, we had to teach her how to take the selfie first. But once he got it, we post on our Instagram a ton and we keep up on our activities. Like Matthew Lewis just got hired as a game day worker and we post all of our biggest exciting news. Like when the college sports conference Q poll last week, well, it's Loma Lions last week. So you get to take pictures of all them and share our exciting things going on in the Career Center. Same with the Twitter, I think that's the same stuff as the Instagram.
Yeah, go ahead. And there's some, some pictures we've been doing recently of some of our events. There, there's going to be a whole profile coming out of the Eli Mack visit. That was, that was pretty powerful. This is a fact that students have been talking about. Yeah, what you're seeing is me on YouTube, understanding that it's a lot bigger than me. And there's, I have a team, I have an agent who's a parent in our district. There are a lot of people that go into making successful content. And it's not just something you wake up someday. But he was very encouraging to people to just start and get, you know, if you have something that you're working on, just don't let things get in the way. He's very encouraging.
Yeah, we came to our football game, the boys' football game in Shenango Valley and supported our boys' football teams. So she's very nice.
Did you remind us when our Career Center opened?
How, when did it open?
What year it opened?
Uh, three, three years ago. So this is the third year.
Yeah, come a long way.
It's the third year, yeah. Yeah, thank you. It's, it's easy to see also, just to, just a plug for our administration and your support of the board that when you go to meetings in different areas, and I'm big into, we all big into sharing what we have and if there's things that we can help out with. But you can see the real difference between districts that have the support of their board and their administration in doing this issue is, and the areas that aren't able to or don't have that support. So we get to do what we do because of you and because of our leadership. So a big thank you. I say things like that to Mr. Daly a lot. He's sick of me saying it. I do say it to Dr. Pharoah a lot and he's sick of me saying it, but it's true. But we can do this work and because of the support we receive.
Well, thank you, all of your students.
Yes.
Can't be in the box?
Can't, yeah.
Thank you.
That was the original.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got our guest tonight, who is our student Board of Education Representative for OFA, Grant Strollet. So I'm going to let Graham kind of, so he's going to share a little bit about some things that have been happening in the whole place.
All right, awesome. So like I said, I'm Grant Strollet. So if you don't know me, I'm the elected representative for our school as the student council president and therefore also as the Board of Education Representative. I do lots of stuff at our school. I work in the mornings, in the third grade, in the second inste. I'm also employed as a type of chamber of commerce member or type of accounting chamber of commerce, excuse me, I get all that stuff. I'm active in the school musical and in multiple AP courses and I'm currently looking at biology field. So that's just a little about me, so everyone's kind of aware of one of that. I have some nice fair share of our district and I love it. So the major things that are happening right now is we recently just did a food perishable clothing, anything we can get dry for the victims of the hurricane down south. So we teamed up with our local K-Pet to coordinate among all the buildings. We got really impressive some food and perishable items and clothing, stuff like that that we've been sent down to help support our spending needs. It was amazing to see. I have two photos on my phone. I didn't know if I should make a presentation or, but they're there. They're on our Facebook page, on trigger online. So make sure to check that out. That was an amazing effort and so proud to say that we did that. And secondly, DARE is currently having a red ribbon week, where that's when like that classic DARE program where you sign the slip and you set out to learn to do drugs. So that is our major fundraiser, fundraiser drive that's going on right now. So yeah, that's just a little bit about our school and I hope to see you all soon.
Thanks, Graham, for your time.
Thank you.
So was that musical thing at your house? Was that you?
Oh, yeah. So I'm also in all of our music programs. If my house actually participated in Porch Fest, like what? I don't think that was it, maybe, oh, oops.
October 6th?
Yeah, yeah. So it started in the month.
That was great.
But yeah, it was really awesome. It was an awesome chance for our students in the music program to go out there and do a little gig in front of, you know, the people of Uwego, sing all of our songs and yeah, have a good rest.
Awesome, great question. Thank you for joining us.
Of course.
Uh, just want to just publicly recognize this, I know they're gone now, with Mr. Westcott and the student workers. They really, really spent a ton of time with the Career Center. Just, it was just evolved in a way that I don't know that we even thought it was going to evolve this quickly, but between the students and Mr. Westcott and the staff and we have something pretty special that's, that's taking place there. And I think it's only going to continue to get better. So kudos to them for, for all the work that they're doing. We have some pretty important athletic events this week. Our girls volleyball team is tomorrow night, I believe, plays Corning, right? I don't know the time, so I might go say at six, six o'clock. Our boys' football, so our girls volleyball team is undefeated and is the stack championship, they'll be playing Corning. Our boys' football team is undefeated. They play Friday night here against undefeated Maine Uggol. So we expect there to be a lot of cars and people on campus Friday night. We've been planning and preparing administratively and with our SROs and, and other folks, the staff, that'll be working the event to, so that we're, we can run things as smooth as, as possible for that.
That's senior recognition too.
And it's also senior recognition, which will take place before the game, I believe at 5:15. It was supposed to be last week, probably had a forfeit, so they had to make an adjustment. And then our boys' soccer will be playing, they're also undefeated. They'll be playing Saturday against Maine Uggol for the sectional championship. I think I got that right. And I don't know the time of that either. But all that information will be coming out because they know Luke does an incredible job back there with public relations. So they'll be sure to, to share those, those details out.
Yeah, a question regarding the sign. Someone mentioned the sign by the track, the digital sign. Is there a way that it can scroll events like that that are coming up? That sign? If someone asked me, and just triggered me in here.
Yeah, we have, we have Luke and Ken.
Okay, so if we drop people off, pick them up to park there.
Right. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, that all basically gets run from a desktop, so it's all coordinated by that. On November 6th, November 6th, Dr. Farrelly will be meeting to discuss the central nuclear oil and gas pilot with our, with our IDAs. So we're looking forward to that.
Excuse me, Corey, what, what was the day on that?
November 6th. They've invited us to come to their meeting, which I think is at 4:30. So we'll be talking about the central nuclear oil and gas pilot, which is obviously we've talked about previously, being a bit of a challenge for the district in a couple of years. And hopefully we can work with the company and the idea to come up with a good solution. We have our district-wide fall newsletter that will be coming out shortly. Tomorrow morning, probably. I got a chance to breeze through it right before the meeting and it was really, really well done. So thanks to Luke and his team that, that worked on that. And then just, just in general, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, some of the things, some of the things we've been focusing on this year, looking at some of our student data. Our, our students in poverty, we're roughly about 50% socioeconomic, low socioeconomic status. And then our, our students with special needs. So we've been looking at that data and having conversations around building as much equity as possible as we can for all of our students and really working with them and trying to, to grow those data points so that they are receiving everything that they need to receive. So that's been a, been a good focus area that we've, you know, we've had conversations about throughout the year here. And I think, oh, just quickly, we did, we did an RFP for construction management. We have infused submissions and Dr. Pharoah will be putting a, a committee together for, for those interviews. And I think now that's it.
Do you like comment on the, on the calendar? I saw it for the first time today. It's beautiful, well done. Compliments to the staff that pulled it together. Thank you. It's real, I love having that accessible in my home.
I have nothing to do with that. That's, that's all Luke and his staff.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And our student workers and missus.
Yeah, pictures are beautiful and like I said, thanks for getting those events on. Really helps us that don't have children in the district.
So just a note for that, Linda, that the Career Center workers you saw tonight, Mr. McAvoy and Ms. Simpson have a group of workers around public relations and marketing that, that are behind the scenes helping with a lot of these things.
They're one of the best ones. It's beautiful, it really is. Nice job.
Thanks for like experimenting there.
Okay, moving on, district business, 10.1. Recommendations to pretend the schools through the school safety plan.
Problems? Second.
Any discussion?
Jean?
Right.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Code of Conduct, ooh, come back second. 10.2, Code of Conduct, need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Jean?
Right.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Wait?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
10.3, policy 9320, drug-free workplace, need a motion?
Motion.
Jean?
Right.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Um.
Wait?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora? John?
Hi.
10.4, policy recruitment and hiring, motion?
Someone?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Unfortunately, I was not, I was absent at the last meeting on the first read and due to health reasons, I'm glad to be back today. But I had a couple of questions and I, I just, clarification for me as a, as a former HR director. We approved, the Board of Education here in Owego, Applelake and approved a brand-new recruitment and hiring policy back in August, I think in April of 2022, which was a mirror image of the New York State School Boards Association policy. And so my question to the policy committee, and also I listened to the board meeting from October 7th to see if there was any discussion from the board members. And there wasn't any question about this particular policy. So here are my questions. Why are we, is there a reason why we're changing? Because I know back in December of 2023, NISBA reviewed our policies and they did not recommend any changes to this policy. So I'm just wondering, was there an issue that popped up that caused us to have a very, very detailed and involved plan for recruitment and hiring? So I am just asking the question I would have asked the meeting coordinator.
I wasn't at the October 7th meeting, so I couldn't talk about it. But it's really more to be proactive. I'm wondering this policy where I work, it was enacted. It's, uh, it's been shared that's difficult to find quality people. And the policy that, that we had where I previously worked was a little bit limiting. I think what this does is it provides clarification. It, in the event that we had a spouse or someone that we wanted to hire, the old policy did, but it didn't specify what kind of management plan would be put in place. For example, if you had a supervisor that was married, married, and we wanted to hire that person, obviously it wouldn't be appropriate for that spouse to directly supervise that person. So it's really wrong to be proactive in that.
Okay, so bear with me because I, I reviewed the policy. I know this is an Erie One Boses policy versus the NISBA policy. I went back and I looked at the one we approved that was from the State School Boards Association. And I thought that was pretty open-ended and specific in hiring and recruitment practices. Nepotism, obviously, you know, I understand the concerns we have about hiring people that are related. But one of the things, for the, I've been in the district since 1983 as a staff member, but you know, I've lived here since 1974. And I know from a historical perspective that we've had aunts, uncles, brothers, sisters, moms, dads work in our district. And we're always trying to recruit those that graduate from here. This is a great place to work, a great place to, to learn, a great place to live. And so that, I was concerned about the amount of expense that would be put on the burden of the HR department, the staff members, because you have to go through and investigate all of your folks that currently work for you. And there was nothing in there about, what about if the individual that's applying for position might have a board member that is on the board currently or passed or whatever? But the bottom line is there was nothing about connections to the board. So I found some things missing in it. I certainly understand management plans. And I know from my, my experience working in this district, there were a lot of individuals either married or, or had relationships or whatever. But the bottom line is they were never put in a supervisory capacity to an employee that was always managed at the level of the district officials, whether it was the superintendent and/or the person who was overseeing HR to make sure that there was no conflict of interest, no nepotism going on, that that supervisor was not supervising their wife or their husband or their daughter or their son, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when we changed our, our very limited policy, which I remember back in 2022, to the one that NISBA recommended, I thought that that covered everything. But you're saying that this policy from Erie One Boses is even more detailed in doing the research. And I still believe that that puts an additional burden, expense and burden on the HR department. But if that's what the school board wants to do, that's fine. But I just wanted to express my concern, especially working in the world of HR for 11 years and knowing how important it was to be careful about making sure that you don't have a supervisor overseeing somebody that they're related to. And, and I just, you know, I apologize for taking the time right now, but I wasn't here last month and I would have definitely raised these concerns, so.
I think what this policy does is it puts the words exactly what you just said.
Yeah, but it, it puts a lot of, we still have to do the research, though all of, and, and, and Ken's in the, in the city in the back. And I can't put the number of how many people work for us, student workers and employees in general, but those are the current employees. So going forward, that's what we're going to have to do as an HR department, is investigate what, where the relationships are and making sure there's no supervisory. Again, I wouldn't expect there to be because the track record of this district has always been very careful not to put a boss overseeing a relative of theirs. At least that is the experience that I have seen or the track record in Owego, Applelake. I can't speak for any other district, but that's what I've seen, especially in these nine years on the board. But a management plan and what needs to go on record, that's a lot of work and that will be spent on the, on the district expense because that's going to cost money for people to do that research. But I also felt that because we have seven board members, there are people that apply for positions that are also potentially related to us. And that's not stipulated in that policy. So it's almost like it's missing something. So I just wanted to just publicly say what my thoughts were and then, and then go from there, from whatever the board decides.
I could just say, just from a personal professional, it doesn't take a lot of money. It's incumbent upon the employee to report that relationship. So there is a sort of. So there is a sort of investigation that has to be done. And the management plans are very difficult to write.
I think, wasn't the impetus for the whole review, you had recently had our policies reviewed that we were looking into by November?
Correct.
But that wasn't one that NISBA suggested.
There's, there's federal and statewide policies that are required by the Board of Education. They have to be on the books. And then there's local policies. This particular policy is considered to be local. And so again, it's our decision as a board as to how we want to continue to revamp it. But I felt like, okay, I was a member of the, so was Jean, a board, of the board when we changed it back in 2022 because we were trying to articulate it more specific to give us, to make sure we're covering the gamut. But our council was through NISBA. That was before we hired NISBA to review our policies. Then they reviewed our policies and in December of '23, said that, that particular policy is covering enough of HR personnel that, and hiring that it needs to do. And that's what most state boards, our school boards are using today. Erie One BOSI's is unique. Brumtaga BOSI's is unique. We have 36 BOSI's across the state. And they do sometimes intervene in these policy creations. So I just think if this is what our school board wants today, fine. I just wanted to make sure I expressed what my background is and why it's important. I do not want to spend any more money than necessary as, as board member. And I know this is going to cost money to make sure you're doing the additional research for your, how many employees again? I forgot already.
375.
375.
I think, I mean, obviously you're very passionate about this, but I think to Mike's point, this is just putting it into policy. It's making faculty, staff, community feel better about having it officially written.
But I didn't know why it was generated. There was no, there was no reason why. I didn't understand why we wanted to change it. We just approved this two years ago. Or, you know, so I didn't understand, was there something that popped that, that somebody complained about?
Well, I think there's questions on maybe the interview, not the interview process, excuse me, but application process. I think this came to light after I asked a question. When, when people apply, it specifically asks if you're related to a board member and then you have to put the board member's name. So, you know, we got into that, come to find out that's been a practice, I guess, for a long time. And then just since there was a policy committee, we're looking at all the policies. And because that's not required, but because there were questions about it, I think it's important that we make the people that this could involve
Okay, well, again.
have a little bit more trust and faith in us at work and cross our Ts and dotting our Os.
I have, I definitely want 100% transparency. But the track record in this district has been, in a supervisory capacity, a person who's in supervision does not supervise a spouse or, or a family member. That has been the track record for as far back as I can remember. If, they make the arrangements, they make the changes. It is up to the employee to notify the, either the HR director, the principal, or whoever that this is the relationship that is happening. But again, I, this is, this is just.
Well, I think, I think we went to a law session, you came out saying society's become so litigious.
It is.
This, what you're saying is that the question why it's changed now, however, we relied on people to do this, not that they're saying it didn't happen, but, but now it's just kind of fortified in the policy that it can't happen. Maybe it's a, maybe it covers us more.
So if that's, if that's the motivation behind the change in trying to protect the district more, I'm all in favor of it. But it will require more work on the part of our staff. And that, I just, like I said, it will require, and it is, the society is much more litigious. I was very concerned about Title IX changes, which went into effect August 2024. And that's making our Title IX scenario even more litigious. There's a lot of things going on right now. They're putting the district. The School Boards Association is very concerned about how easy it is to file suit against districts. Period. So.
We do.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Next policy, Community Useless. Oh, you didn't go.
You didn't go yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Nora?
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Okay, only a first read for the, the use of schools. So first read sent back.
Yes, we added things today. So we're putting it back out to everybody.
Okay.
We'll take it back to the final list.
Okay, so people can be patient when they have read the 10.6. Pause on this. I'll tell you why. 10.7, External Audit Approval, Need a Motion for that?
Hold on. Second.
Discussion?
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Public Comments, 11.1, first up, Lieutenant. First up is Abe.
Hi. My name is Abe Matheny. A lot of people in this room, they have crazy, and they're right. I've been a very vocal critic of this school board for a long time, both positive and negative. I have sent you some correspondence prior to this meeting because I was very disappointed I could not attend the audit meeting. Before I forget, one of the things I did come across, I've recognized in recent years is how important it is for the board members to, to do the job, to work at. I think the span of understanding that you should have is vast. And I just hope that you give your best to it. We've had board members who have done nothing but contributed in making the form, and that has not done us any good. Now, as I said, I've, I've sent you some stuff regarding finances. I use the school's numbers. They come from the, from the Form ST3 that goes to the Comptroller and New York State Department of Education. And I was saying that the meeting, that was, audit meeting, was illegal. This is the Open Meetings Law. It says 72 hours notice. This is an advisory opinion. It's the quasi judicial body, government, no, Committee on Open Government. It helps those that can't understand the spirit of the law to understand it. It says 72 hours prior notice. And I can, I can read it to you, but I shouldn't have to. You can read it. It's OM, it's the committee's letter 4985. If it's online, you can pull it up. So Abe, that's two. Well, would you like to give me a little bit of time because it's for the children? And there's some stuff I'd like to point out in the, the scholarship thing is really messed up.
Here's, here's what I would ask, okay? I think we've communicated, and there, there is a plan to get to the bottom. There's nothing more that I think anybody up here would like to do is to get to the bottom of the issue that you brought forth on several occasions. Simply because we would all know, you know, who's, who has, who's right, who's wrong, and we can kind of fix it. There's nothing more that I would like to do than to solve that issue.
Can I help you? Fifteen seconds, please?
Fifteen. No.
Superintendent Green just said 50% of the popular, student body is bottom line. Well, we have more scholarship money by far per student than anyone else. And I looked at Scarsdale and Massakami and Westchester. And I couldn't find anyone who had as much money as we did per student.
And I, and I saw that. And, and that is an issue that is worth looking into. But I think on the whole, your scholarship issue seems to have been going on for a number of years. And I think everyone wants it solved, one way or the other. So we'll have conversations and set something up that we can hopefully get it solved. I know there's been attempts in the past, but we will attempt to get this solved. Fair enough? I appreciate it. Pat.
Every side is excited about this equity is, seems to be some of you. But I'd like to address the announcement Mr. Green sent to his team. I'm not sure if the board was part of that team that, on the topic of equity and the push for equity. As a grandparent to children or grandchildren in this district, I'm deeply concerned, even more so now that it's being pushed into K through 12 curriculum aligned with a CRSE framework. I'm asking for complete transparency to parents, the taxpayers, what and how and when will this begin and all the funding behind it? And I know Jean told me that he, he promised, because I've been talking about this for four years, he promised that he would expose all the funding for these DEI, CL, cultural transparent. He promised me that he would expose or tell, tell me all about the funding and where it's going. Now here we are. This is extremely a hot topic and concerns need to be answered. Would the board have an open question and answer meeting to address these topics? Because it's so big. I think, I don't know how you feel, but it's all political rhetoric. And our kids are being used as social experiments. It's unacceptable. To lower accountability, lower standards for our kids is a disgrace. It really is. In the name of equity. So I also find it interesting too, that the state's talking about their regionalization plan part of equity. I saw this quote and I thought how perfect. Students have suffered greatly since the goal of school became graduation rather than education. The diploma that, that signifies the former doesn't necessarily mean the recent, the latter. It's total deception. I implore the board to really think about the agenda behind all of this search of conscience. And are you really doing the right thing for the future of the kids?
Thank you. We are going to have budget sessions that are televised, that Bob will hold, where we will go through items and maybe a better understanding of the budget and how it's constructed and what's in there. So first, have we decided what the first one is? When the first one, you know, tonight after this?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
So that be announced somehow, so the public can come and do question, question and answer? Are they allowed to answer questions?
It's a board training. So a board training is not a public meeting that way.
Okay, so I'm asking for something different. I need to know if you can do that and go make it open somewhere just for people to come. There's a lot of people that are concerned about this. A lot of parents, many, many people.
Okay, well, we can put that on the agenda. Okay, look into that.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions, but since you haven't addressed 10.6 yet, I'll leave her down. Graham, were you part of the select choir that participated in the 9/11?
Yes, I was part of the Changers of Ages.
On behalf of the people who attended, thank you so much. I don't know if I'll give you, but the choir came down to our 9/11 memorial, sang some amazing music. The harmonies were absolutely incredible. It was way beyond professional. You did it. You guys did an amazing job. Please share our gratitude with the other people in your group. I got to talk to a couple of them. They were absolutely amazing. And it really made the memorial that much more meaningful. And I was one of the responders to New York City for that, for that. So it means a lot to me.
Thank you.
My question, how many of you got my email this morning regarding the mentorship? I got a long response that if you do, would you check your email? My concern, and I expressed this last year when the topic came up, is why are we hiring a consultant if we have a competent AD and we have coaching staff that's qualified? Why are we paying a consultant who meant $30,000 when that money, I think, and a number of people in my neighborhood when we had the conversations feel that because teachers are saying they need more support in the classroom, they need more aides, that that money could be better used in some other way? The AD, in my opinion, as a physical education person, should be handling the metric, should be set up a program. And what evidence do we have? The goal last year, the, the first one. Anyway, what Mr. Renetti was hiring to do was to set up.
Sorry, it was wrong in here. I don't know what to do with that.
Just trying to be fair with the time.
Do we have a way that that program is evaluated? What was the outcome? What's the expectation is going to be different for him to be hired again? I guess that's time limit much. I'll apply. I put your questions for me. We'll take a look at that and consider that.
And I'm sorry I neglected to talk about the push button. Were you able to hear things all right?
Not a lot of it, but I don't know.
Okay, so I don't know if there's a way to make these permanent or not. If it's always push button.
Same thing, same thing happens with the town board.
Is it possible to look into? It shouldn't be that much.
We just get a different, it's a different, like a different.
I'm sorry, I forgot.
He's adopted.
Well, I don't know. Is that better? I don't think so. Leo's, for the special one. 12, RFP Legal Services, sent out.
Deadline is 11:25. So I'll be back after that.
Okay, retreat November 18th. This will be at the Pappelli House for the board meeting and for the meeting for the board afterwards, be on the 18th. And if everyone will indulge me for another executive session for about 10 minutes, would injure, motion to adjourn the executive session?
Hold on. Second.
Are you going to have a working session after? Are you going to have a working session after?